With an interim position. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, we're going into communication. I want to turn this over to our superintendent. And she has the floor right now. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to begin by honoring one of our very own Janet Barnes. And Janet Barnes is being recognized today. Could you please stand up and speak for her? Okay. As Tutor Doctor Central Coast 2015 Tutor of the Year nominee. And she has been nominated towards a Tutor Award for our State of California among, I have to say, over 5,000 nominees and is down to the top five. So we are really excited. Out of our California State Senate, I would like to honor you for being named one of the five Monterey County, well, five County Tutors of the Year nominees for Tutor Doctor Central Coast. Thank you for your commitment to educational excellence and to your community dedication. Thank you. So next, I would like to, in a few minutes, just invite some of participants in the ALASE program. And ALASE is a program, the name itself is combined from the Spanish word for LEAK with the English acronym for Leadership and Civic Engagement. This program was funded by the Monterey County Health Department and was free to its participants. It was first launched in 2014. And we are very, very, very proud to honor the majority of the folks who we are honoring tonight are our parents. Our parents from the Sherwood community. They attended an eight-week session and admitted, where is Eda? Can you come up to the podium, please? So Eda can repeat a little bit of what I just did in Spanish for me. We want to honor these attendees, there's 15 participants, who learned the ins and outs of civil engagement. This meant from everything of learning how to vote, how to volunteer, how to influence school boards and city councils, those types of organizations that are very meaningful and that hold a place in our, when we talk about civic engagement, that means government influence and how do we influence the stakeholders from within our community to make this a more powerful place. I love what, this is a quote from Angelica, where's Angelica? Can you stand up, Angelica? Angelica is a coordinator for ALASE. I want to hear her statement. I think it was the Monterey Herald where you were interviewed and you said, "Every heart of the community, from education to governmental agencies, affect the health of its residents." So this particular course, it was an eight-week course conducted in Spanish. And I'll let Eda, we'll talk a little bit more about this in just a second. And then I'm going to go around the front.
Buenas noches. Esta noche vamos a reconocer a un grupo de padres que participaron en un taller de ocho semanas, un entrenamiento conducido por la señorita Angelica. Y tomó lugar en la escuela Sherwood. Y el entrenamiento, básicamente fue para enseñarle a los padres de familia a cómo enseñarse más, cómo correr el gobierno, cómo ser mejores ciudadanos aquí en los Estados Unidos y involucrarse en la comunidad y aprender diferentes tipos de políticas para que ellos sean más involucrados en el gobierno, en las salinas, en las escuelas y a nivel estatal, si es posible, para darles esos. Ellos ya son un grupo de líderes y esta noche nuestra superintendent, Martha Martinez, quiere reconocerlos por su gran esfuerzo y dedicación.
There's an image that ALASE uses. It's the image of a tree. And it looks at the healthy soil being the work of the community workers. It looks as the roots, as the children who will thrive and ultimately benefit the whole tree, which is the community at large. So we would like to thank, at this time, the two facilitators of ALASE, Ana Ambriz and Ana Martha Ramirez. We will see. We will make, we will make one for you, Angelica. There's not one in here for you already, okay? So we will leave that one there. Okay, so Angelica, can you, and I'm going to stay up over here so the participants come up to you as facilitators can also help us. We're congratulating them and then, so I'm going to start with, give the names to us.
Rosa Aguilera.
Welcome. These two are two certificates, one from our senate. You want to go ahead and read that?
Este van a recibir dos certificados, uno del senado de aquí de California y uno de aquí del distrito escolar por su gran participación. Y lo voy a leer, lo que dice aquí. State of California senate, Maria Martha Ramirez, ALASE Academy of Salinas, 2015 Participantes. Es nombre del senado del estado de California. Me gustaría felicitarle con motivo de su participación en el curso de seis semanas para la academia de la participación ciudadana centrada en la construcción de habilidades de liderazgo y aumentar el conocimiento de la participación en los sistemas del gobierno. Usted es digno de elegir por su determinación en la búsqueda de sus metas educativas. Felicitaciones y mejores deseos con sus proyectos futuros presentados en este día, 12 de octubre de 2015. Este es del senado y el otro es certificado de agradecimiento para la señorita Angelica Chavez. Y básicamente es lo mismo.
Yeah.
Okay, este lo queremos presentar a Lidia Rodriguez, certificado de participación aquí de Salinas, feliz.
Okay. Haydi?
Ayden Rodriguez.
Guillermo Rodriguez. Felicidades.
Cristobal Melchor.
Esperanza Ferelta.
Don Jamil Duena.
Heidi García Hernández.
María Estabel Martínez.
María Romero.
María Destera.
Rosa, si baja.
Selena Ávila. La Tris Altares.
Um, photos? Do we have, can you take a picture? I want to be in the back. Okay, squeeze in, squeeze in, squeeze in. Oh, to massage that.
We have one more person.
Ustedes no se tienen que quedarse por el, si la puta están evitados a quedarse, pero sí tienen que ir, es el tiempo para salir. Muchas gracias. So we are extremely proud to be honoring our own tonight. This is our parent community who again participated in an eight-week institute. They came every evening with their kids. They struggled through the entire course, which is in this binder. And I believe they are more, greater citizens to our community as a result of this. They will take on community projects to continue to grow in this area of civic engagement. So we're quite proud of them. So can we hear it for them as they're exiting?
Good evening again. That's your focus. We have an employee organization presentation right now and we have CSEA. Who else is here? Part-time teachers, employee organizations. Good evening, you're here. Do you have any comments? Yes.
Good evening, board. Thank you for this opportunity. I came just wanting to say that teachers are now starting the work of assessment or working into pro cards. We're doing math assessments, the end of module testing is what it's called now. And also the next step, we have writing assessments. I didn't have much to say this evening, but I did want to say on the presentation just now, how wonderful it was to see the students here, seeing their parents so involved, seeing, you could see the pride in the kids too. So that was quite a treat. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have the substitute teachers representative here. Same time and we take no reports. Okay? Okay, the next item will be the superintendent.
Thank you. Today I have lots to report. The last two or three weeks have been extremely busy. Right after our last board study session that we had on September 28th, I ran out of the building to go attend the new Californian kickoff reception and was able to have a great conversation with the publisher, with the editors around positive public media coverage. So that was really good. I also participated in a panel discussion along with superintendent from Paramount Unified and two Southern California board members that were on a panel for the California Latino School Board Association Conference on October the 2nd. Also began a series of evaluation meetings, starting with assistant superintendents and am now beginning to meet with principals around goal setting. I see Carols here and some other members of the executive board from the S E T C group. And we have really, I feel, have had very productive meetings and so I met with them on Tuesday. One of the things that we really want to look at is recognition for teachers and kind of re-displaying some things that are going on in the hallway. So they're so open and both, CSEA, I met with them, really open to new ideas, new ways of really honoring and publicizing and recognizing our employees. I'm really thankful for that. Cast meeting was Wednesday, October the 6th. Shortly thereafter, actually the cast meeting was a presentation by our fire chief to discuss blood preparations and preparing for the El Nino winter storms. The prediction for El Nino storms is very grave and the potential for flooding in our area can hit about four of our schools. So I'm currently looking to work with the principals of those four schools to figure out how we can have community forums and information out to those schools to make sure that we are prepared for any potential flooding situations that may occur. I also was able to meet with Francine Rod from First Five, the executive director of First Five, to discuss collaborative partnerships. And then last week, there was a team of us, both from the business office and from educational services, that intended, that attended an LCAP meeting at MCOE, really looking at ways that we can partner and make sure that we're inclusive, our stakeholders, along with LCAP review processes. As president of our board mentioned, we went through the process of advertising for an assistant superintendent of human resources. We conducted an initial panel and so thank you, how many of you were here on that initial panel? You were several of you. So we had, actually we had a pretty nice pool and from my understanding, a much stronger pool than the former one. We conducted final interviews last week, but we were going to continue with an interim position. I also have been able to attend informational meeting, well, actually, they weren't informational, they're informational to me, but they're only to the participants. Several teacher meetings that have been going on, I kind of drop in and drop out, but it's been really exciting to see the energy that our teachers bring to the tables. There was an ad caliber informational meeting. There was a PICT meeting, I don't know what exactly all stands for, but it was a great, great discussion around some of the things that teachers need to be really concerned about were brought to the table. And I think those are great items and I love the liveliness of the discussions and being able to problem solve kind of on the spot. So that was really exciting to attend. I went to the graduation for the ALASE group, which was such a grand affair and they just, it's really a beautiful how the community kind of held us. They did their little potluck and they had quite a ceremony there. Also, we had our school site council trainings going on last week with 15 participants in English and about 30, about 20, 21 in our Spanish session. So I was able to stop in in one of those meetings. And so I am beginning to recognize faces, names I still need to work on, but faces I'm getting. This Saturday was quite an exciting day too. Mathy Vidal had a Saturday academy that I was able to at least view. They have English language development session going on there for their second graders that are transitioning from Spanish to English. They have a science, a science academy that is really centered around project-based learning and some science activities as students are acquiring their English. And then they had a technology session for higher performing students working on Minecraft. So that was quite exciting to see. Then I came to the district office and we had a boot camp going on here for our interns. We have currently close to 30 interns that are basically teachers who are, you know, prospective credential teachers, but they're in training still. So they need different levels of support, even newer, I mean even deeper levels of support than our teachers coming from college going through the teaching credential program. So Mrs. Sanders and the coaches have put together a series called Boot Camp and twice a month, and they were here on Saturday, come together on Saturday, they were working on classroom management techniques and skills, along with doing some hands-on poster building around what types of signals and visual students need to have to adhere to creating a positive learning environment. So that was quite exciting to see. And then lastly, I attended the Mission Park Fall Carnival and that wowed me away. Of course, I have a check I need to write to them because I got two silent auction items. So that was fun and it was great games for the kids. Oh, I forgot, I was going to email you then, pictures of the kids slurping the worms. That was really good. That was the number one attraction at the Fall Carnival. Great food and great music by DJ Frank over there, along with the great farmer's market. So it was quite an affair. If you've never been to our Fall Carnival, I hear that there's one coming up, I think, at University Park next weekend. So join us for the fun. It's just great. It's a great, great sense of energy. It's Saturday, laid back, kids are really having fun and it's really great to see all the parents out. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the report? Same time, colleagues? I do want to ask board members, okay? I'm going to go to my left, my right. I'll be the last one.
I have a couple of things that I'd like to say. One, I would like to thank Mr. Hayes for inviting me to Monterey Park School to the school site council meeting. So it was nice to go and see the parents that are participating and I want to thank all of the parents and all the teachers that are involved in the school site council because that's the foundation of obviously how you spend the money. Also, I worked for Monterey County Readings, Penitent Institute, and I also head Monterey Park. And it was really interesting to be an observer, not just an observer, but I'm working in the back reading with someone and I'm watching this little boy, they were doing, they were doing Common Core math. And it was all language-rich, of course, as everybody knows. And this little boy's back there and he done something bad and he was sitting next to me. And he, and so it was interesting because he didn't have the tools he needed, he didn't understand what the reading was. I mean, and the teacher's doing her very best, you know, she's trying to get all the groups and everybody doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I asked the little boy, you know, did he know what was going on? He says, "No." So I kind of got rid, not got rid, but finished the one girl that I had and then I went over and I started helping him. And this teacher had an aide and I'm watching this thinking, wow, I just can't, I mean, my heart goes out to all the teachers and how hard you're working and all the aides and, because Common Core math is really, really hard. And it's very difficult to be able to get second language learners learning what they can't read. So I just, as an observation of it and watching it and really experiencing it, I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate how hard it is working in that area. I also attended the day of the workshops and saw all the teachers and saw everybody really trying to take everything in, all the different, mostly it was math at the same time. But I was also concerned that I found out that about 79 teachers called in sick that day. And I think that we need to, as a district, do better than that. You know, we need to reach out, find out why, if the workshop isn't interesting, is it too difficult, is it this, is it that? Whatever it is, we all need to participate together in order to be successful. And that was an observation that I made. But I want to thank everybody who attended and those who were in the service or whatever it was. Also, I would like to ask for, to have, I'm still thinking about the combination teachers and after seeing what one teacher in one grade had been doing Common Core math, and when you're doing double duty, I really think that we need to have a collaboration time where we let all of the teachers that are in combo classes be pulled out and have their day together to talk about best practices within each other and then have a coach there and then really, really hone in on that. Because if we can't, if we can't eliminate the combo, we better make sure that we're giving every bit of help that we can to those combo teachers. So I hope that we can make that happen. And I was also tutoring someone, a fourth grader from Tercio Vasquez School. And I don't know if you know, but they're totally non-paper. Everything is computerized now. And I'm tutoring a little girl who can't, she, she needs something tactile. So I think, I want to, again, I want to thank the teachers for, it's hard. You've got these kids that learn in all these different modalities and you have kids that, she literally has to have a piece of paper there to write down her numbers in order to do her math and she's not allowed to do so in the class, in the teacher which, where she's learning. So hang in there, everybody, and do, you know, do the very best you can, but please be sensitive to children individually because they're all different and they learn differently. And when you, when you, when you're tutoring these kids and people are paying big bucks to have people come in and help them, then we need to really try to eliminate the need for having individual tutors so that we can help and, and help the parents learn what Common Core is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Mr. Kim, any comments or reflections? Nurse? You traveled a long way to get here, so don't get mad now, excuse me. Okay?
On Saturday evening, I went with my son to the Lincoln School Science Fair spaghetti feet and ate and watched kids go all over the place. So that was pretty exciting. It was well turned out and that's, that's what I did and those kids have energy.
Thank you, sir. My reflection of what I did up to is, is basically, I attended, I attended the school site council training that just happened recently. I want to thank Ms. Huerta for her presentation. She was rated, what, 80% satisfaction? But the parents there that were there, I've been with them for almost two years. And one of the things that I did say to the parents and some of the faculty that were there and some of the administrators over there, I said, "You know what? Our number one cause are the kids, the children of this school district. And we are trying, as a board, as administration, trying to get those resources in and get that dialogue going back and forth so we can accomplish our children to get ready for the sixth grade, seventh grade." And I was approached by one parent in there who works for another school district, said to me, "What can we do to get sixth graders to become seventh graders before they go to seventh grade?" That kind of stuff. "We need to pull that in from our neighbor, Salinas Union High School District." And I worked in that district for 28 years. And doing so, I know we can do that as two partners coming together. And that's coming closely. And I want to thank the Salinas Administration and friends who are here from Salinas Union High School District. Thank you very much. You are neighbors and at the same time, you're partners. This is the end of my presentation. The next item will be individuals addressing the board with items that are not appearing on the agenda. Keep it simple, keep it clear, but at the same time, keep a straight line in the back because sometimes I can't see the faces that people are jumping up and down on. I'll not speak up there. But we'll give ourselves some limited time on that and the door is open. The opportunity is open. Anyone from the audience on items not on the agenda?
Hi, good evening. Fred Garden, Mission Park School, parents of six. So I got a text message while I was standing over there and on behalf of Yvette Vasquez, the vice president of the PTA Mission Park, she just wanted to thank you. It sounds like you had a very busy Saturday, but thank you for making time and coming out to the Mission Park Carnival. I know a lot of parents and parent leaders are happy to see their superintendent. In her recent memory, she hadn't seen one attend the carnival and to get to know the children, witness all the activity that's going on. children, witness all the activity that's going on. I mean, what you saw last weekend is actually not an anomaly. It is a very well-attended event year after year. And I think you're right, stuff like this is happening all throughout our school district. And it's great to see parents collaborating together to make the school experience the best it can be so that our kids look back and have these fond memories. I know my kids look forward to it every year and they just have a blast as usual. So I'm glad you could be a part of that. And Yvette did want me to say that you do owe some money for your...
I mean, good for you.
And Missy is right there, so take your money at the door.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Items not on the agenda? Do you need time?
Hi, I'm Amy Walker. I teach third grade at Intubadad and I just wanted to share some positives from my experience in math grant. It's been definitely an experience, but so far my kids have learned a blog, their kid blog. I now have a classroom website, which I've been able to update frequently because before the math grant, I had no clue what I was doing. I've also learned to teach my kids how to make, take diagrams through the use of the app Thinking Rocks. And my project this past trimester was using quizies.com, which is a multiplayer game. And my kids get really excited to play the game and their learning at the same time so as a form of assessment. And I think I've just seen a lot of growth in my kids and a lot of engagement through using math grant. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Say one. That's two minutes. Say three. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Zanzo, principal for Mission Park. I just want to thank the superintendent and Ron Dillander for reaching out to the schools. It was a very fast turnaround, but we had an offer to attend student literary days in Monterey when there was an author festival. And I know that the sixth grade teachers from my school and I think from Laurelwood attended, the students really enjoyed the experience mingling with true authors, both of adult and young adult fiction. And they were inspired also to use social media and clean up the planet. One of their favorite things they learned about was a service called Literati, where you take a picture of a piece of trash, hashtag it out on your tweet and then pick it up and clean up the planet. But anyway, thank you very much for supporting sixth grade students mingling with the world.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're gonna go to consent and our number one item is a regular board meeting minutes. Okay? All consent, okay? Do we have any question? Any question on the boardroom?
Motion to approve consent items.
Let me ask the public if they have any comments on this, since it was set out. Yes. Janice first, for the record, please.
Rosie Sanchez for CSU. I have some questions on item number eight. Do you want me to ask them now or do you want to wait until...
We're gonna pull it? Okay, we'll pull that. Number eight. Anyone else? Okay, say none. Okay, all the consent. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent items. Accept number eight.
Do you have a question on the floor? Accept number eight.
Second.
If there's a second on that, then just by that. Board members, say none. All of the favor? Aye. It's a four zero, one apostrophe, excuse, this is number eight. Number eight. Okay. Thank you very much for bringing that into attention.
Well, first of all, I wanted to say that CSU recognizes the importance of a program that would have to increase the ADA revenue. CSU also recognizes that this program could recapture instructional time for students that results in improved learning and reflect on improved testing. However, in looking at the analysis for this program, it says all AARC sessions are taught by district teachers and supported by district classified staff. It also says that 10 schools have committed to this program. There are several questions regarding the agreement between the Salinas City School District and Educational Consulting Services. This agreement is a three-year contract with a setup fee of $10,000 due upon your board approval tonight. If the district requests any, if the district requests a consultant for services outside of the scope of the agreement, the district will be paying from $20 to $150 per hour, and that's like for clerical or principal, so that's an additional cost. Going through the pages in here, on the page that is titled AARC in a nutshell, it says, per ed code, breakfast and lunch must be offered to all students. Alisal Union School District providing the lunches. On the page that is titled Lead Teacher Responsibilities, the duties on that page include unlock classrooms and restrooms, get trash cans ready for lunch distribution, distribute lunches and document any lunch that is handed out. Lunch must be served after 10:00. A full lunch must be distributed. Do not collect money from students. Students' meal accounts will be charged. Facilitate in getting all trash emptied or brought to a central location before leaving. Lock all doors and set alarm. All of those duties sound like duties that classified employees would do. On the page that has the circles with the word benefit in the middle, on the district, it says ADA benefits. The benefit for the district is ADA revenues and the outlet requirement, which is great. For the parents, the benefit is safe environment, meals, and childcare. That's great too. On the circle for the teachers, it's supplemental income. That's wonderful. For the classified, it says supplemental income. In this agreement, there's nowhere does it say that classified are even going to be hired. On the page that has sample districts using AARC, Alisal district is not listed on that list of districts already using that program. So then why are we doing the food service from another district? What message are we giving our own employees in our district? Why aren't we providing the food service? So if we're hiring people from Alisal for food, are we also gonna hire teachers from Alisal to teach this Saturday program? Why didn't the district discuss this with CSU? I think it's been talked about already because 10 schools already have committed. And, you know, the other thing is, this is gonna be on Saturday without, classified are also trained for emergencies, you know, where to shut off emergency gas, et cetera, et cetera. We're only gonna have one lead teacher there and what is there for an emergency? We don't understand why we weren't included in the conversation of this program. Am I being kind? No. Anyway, it's a $10,000 question. If you sign tonight, you have to pay them tomorrow. And I don't know if you have the answers to any of those questions. Why are we going to Alisal for food service if we have our own food service?
Did he ask our superintendent?
Oh, I don't know the answer about the Alisal food. I'm wondering if that's a typo, but it is. I think they use the sample from Alisal. I think we use our own food service pieces. But beyond that, what I did want to say about this, the 10 schools that are interested, we have 10 schools that are running Saturday programs already. And so those are the schools that we have the potential to capture these funds, the ADA fund for those Saturday programs. And in those Saturday programs, we have classified as certificated staff people. Most of the time you have an administrator there. These ones I've been in, there's always been either the assistant principal and principal has been on campus. And I don't know, on the other piece, do you have more information on this?
The other two questions, of course, these documents were sample information about what could be and what's, but this is another district. Alisal was not listed, but it is listed that works, that contacted this company. The intent isn't for teachers to lock Alisal or to set alarms, so we won't be hired and teach our little duties. Lead teacher responsibilities are given as a staple. And then it was a technical as far as contracting Alisal for pieces. So as far as the circles with the benefit, yes, there's intent going forward that certificated and classified staff would be hired.
My understanding is, is that currently, I mean, when I was at, nothing to do on Saturday because we're eating lunch, those lunches had to be prepared by somebody. Certificate teachers were preparing the lunches. They were bagged lunches that were provided by our food service employees. But we're, I'm, this is not my item, I did not prepare this item. But my understanding is, is this is recovery of existing program, potential additional cost recovery to bring into our district of existing programs that already have. That means that those programs have already been advertised through the appropriate advertisements that we have to. Teachers, lead teachers for the programs, administrators, you're not gonna see that on there, but they're usually there. And then any other classified staff that's involved in that. If you can add to that or I don't know.
Yes, as far as the sample charges, that's if we weren't able to hire our own staff, those would be sample costs, but we believe that, like you just said, of computer condition, we have people working as lead teachers, teachers on-site, used by, for the classified, whether it's kindergarten, elementary, or the associate.
I appreciate the answers and...
Thank you, they're good questions.
Had, you know, we had a little bit of communication about it, I probably wouldn't have been up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Back to business. This is item, do you take a motion?
I just like to, I'll make the motion, but I just would like to ask that next time we have a program that affects CSU or SETC, that we discuss it with them as well, especially if there's a program change, so that they feel comfortable with it as well. So I'll make a motion to approve item number eight.
Motion on the floor. Do we have a second to the, do we have a second on that? Okay, discussion? Say none. All of the favors? Aye. One apostrophe, excused. Okay, that's four zero. Thank you. Next item. Okay, Administration, I don't have any items on Administration. Do you have an item on curriculum, 2015, 16, single plan for student achievement? And W. I. will be presenting as well as Laurel Park?
Laurel Park.
Laurel Park, excuse me. I got a lot of parts on my, I won't. And then the two there, the two there. Okay? I was ahead of myself, pardon that.
So we have our principal from Abukavial, Ms. Julie Hermosillo.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, good evening, school board and district office colleagues. I'm Julie Hermosillo, the principal of El Gavilan, and I'm joined tonight by my vice principal, Ernesto Gonzalez. And also in attendance are two teachers, Mrs. Delaney teaches third grade and Mrs. Sparks also teaches third grade, they're in the back. So without further ado. Okay. So, just a real quick, in regards to our demographics, we actually have 759 students because to enroll after I did that. We have 39 special day class students. We have 48 preschool students, so our grand total is 840 students. And you can see our subgroup enrollment. It's, you know, we have many, many English learners. We have a large socio-economic disadvantaged population. We do have students with disability and we have a large homeless youth and most likely The El Gavilan School mission statement, basically what we are striving to do is become a very collaborative environment, which includes both teachers and students. Critical skills and knowledge, that is cocooned inside of the Common Core State Standards, which also are cocooned inside of the depths of knowledge, the DOCA, levels of thinking and collaborating. And the 21st century learning four Cs are collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. And everything that we do is focused on propelling students for college and career readiness. And so this evening, I'm going to share what sets El Gavilan apart from the other schools, which was my task. So we have several academic curriculum programs and agencies that we work for and with. We are in the process of purchasing a web-based program, iRead. It serves K-2 students. It is a learning-based program that incorporates paper pencil, as you were speaking about, Ms. Barnes, along with computer access. And what it really focuses on is it focuses on the foundational skills, the Common Core foundational skills that are very rich and rigorous and robust in the K-2 levels. Also, not on the slide, because I did forget, I'm the new principal, last year I know that ST Math was started at El Gavilan. And so we are bringing that up again. We're actually going to have the ST trainer come to our site and work with teachers at the end of the month so that our teachers are fully prepared and comfortable and understand how to implement and how to get their students onto the program so that can be an integral part of the school. Technology, fabulous Chromebook lab, 43 Chromebooks. We have an older lab right next door that has a number of desktop computers. Our second through sixth grade, they have approximately 11 laptops in each classroom. Our K-1 classes have approximately eight iPads per class. And we're in the process of just getting the last little piece that we need for iPad protection so that we can deploy an iPad out to every teacher TK through six. We partner with CSU MB for service learning. We have a service learning student in our K-1 classroom and we also have a service learning student in our third grade classroom. We're also working with Minicore and we have a Minicore student in the two classes that have the highest migrant population of students and that is one in first grade and one in second grade. And then we also are partnering with the senior council, the foster grandparents, and that's a nonprofit organization that matched low...